Six thirty, because of all meeting order, roll call.
Greg Myrie, here. Cindy Wright.
Here.
And you Bellman.
Here.
And Hall.
Here.
Jay Weiser.
Here.
Jay Hopper.
Here.
Well, if you're to read the meeting notice and.
Notice a public hearing. Please take notice that an application has been made by Joseph Gardner, sixty-nine, sixty-two, State Twenty-Sixth, the Crescent, Minnesota, five-five-nine-two-one, for a conditional use permit to have a dwelling in an agricultural district, section fourteen through fourteen point three, conditional uses subdivision one, subsection ten, in Hope Township, following premises to wit, southeast quarter, southwest quarter, southwest quarter, southeast quarter, section two, township one oh three, range four, Houston County, Minnesota, parcel zero-five, zero-zero-one-one, zero-zero-one. Said applicant standing and making application is as the owner of said described lands. Hearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Commissioners' Room, City of Caledonia, Minnesota, at six-thirty P M on Thursday, September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty. All persons having an interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to submit comments relative to the granting or denying of said application. Comments should be mailed to the Environmental Services Department, zero-four South Marshall Street, Caledonia, Minnesota, five-five-nine-two-one, or emailed to martin dot Eric at C O dot Houston dot M N dot U S. Must be received by Wednesday, September twentieth, twenty-twenty-three. Comments in regard to petition received by the state will be part of the public record. Will be made available for review by the Planning Commission prior to the meeting. Houston County Planning Commission by Martin Eric Salving.
Well, if the applicant would care to come forward and just kind of tell us what the project is.
Yes, I'm converting an old garage into a mini home. That's already been there for twenty-five years. And I tore the whole existing house down.
Do you intend to live there full-time?
Yeah. That's gonna be my primary residence.
I understand that you're gonna build a deck and stuff on there too.
Yeah, and I wanna put like a garden shed up too, also.
Questions from the planning commission?
How big is it?
Garage? Twenty-four by thirty-six. I mean, the existing one. But my house is twenty-four by thirty-six. But the shed I'm gonna do, I think, is fourteen by twenty-four. With a twelve by twelve, lean to on the backside.
The house was there, had a fire and gas and stuff, and then this was just two months before.
Yeah. It was too far gone.
I drive by there a lot and I kinda watch the progress as we were doing it. So, it looked like somebody tried to fix it up once and they kinda gave it up.
Well, I think everyone that's bought it in the last twenty-five years has tried to fix it up and just never got the job done.
Yeah. Yeah. Well. Any other questions?
No.
No.
Pretty straightforward, I guess. We'll just go ahead and proceed then if you want to run back. Sit back there, or here is fine.
Whatever you want me to do.
Stay right there. If I'll stay there, we could chew that shit off. I can make a motion to take finding nine. Twelve and thirteen.
Second to that one?
Second.
I'll in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think that's already been, go through the findings, the fact, everybody's comfortable with that?
Yep.
Number one, that the proposed use can conform to the county language. Staff analysis, this location satisfied the density limitations and compliance requirements identified in our zoning.
I always agree with the staff analysis on number one, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose?
Number two, that the applicant demonstrates a need for the proposed new staff analysis. Additional use permit is required for this parcel to be compliant with the non-farm dwelling permits and allow continued use of dwelling at this location.
All those that agree with the analysis on number two, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose?
Number three, that the proposed use will not degrade the water quality of the town. Staff analysis, the use of this parcel has been for a single-family dwelling for many years. The new proposal will not intensify that use. New septic system design and install by a licensed Minnesota septic professional will be required.
All those that agree with the analysis on number three, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose?
Number four, that the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of water runoff. Staff analysis, the square footage of impervious surfaces on the parcel will likely be very similar. I think this should type of impervious conditions once all buildings are complete. In addition, the original house was likely partially within floodplain, while the proposed dwelling is well above. This relocation will be a benefit to stormwater flow over the parcel.
I just got one question, though, the building in front of the building is probably up in that same plane up in there.
At Boncom, yeah.
So, that's about quite a long time ago. All those in favor of number four, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose?
Number five, that soil conditions are adequate to accommodate proposed use. Staff analysis, this is an existing structure, but so that this location can accommodate structures with proper design.
All those that agree with the staff now, put to number five, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose?
Number six, that potential pollution hazards have been addressed and the standards have been met. Staff analysis, septic system design installed by a licensed Minnesota septic professional will be required.
All those that agree with the analysis on number six, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose?
Number seven, that adequate utilities access, roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Staff analysis, since a single-family dwelling has been located on this parcel for many years, all utilities should be present. Any additional utilities are the responsibility of the applicant.
All those that agree with the analysis on number seven, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose?
Number eight, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide sufficient off-duty parking and loading space to serve with proposed use. Staff analysis, there is adequate open space on this property for parking of recreational equipment and vehicles.
All those that agree with the staff analysis on number eight, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose?
Number ten, that the conditional use will not be injurious with use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for purposes already permitted. Staff analysis, while this parcel is within the agricultural district, the surrounding area is primarily residential for government-owned recreational land. This is also a continuation of an existing use and should not be injurious to those in the immediate vicinity. The improvements made by the applicant will likely increase nearby property values.
All those that agree with the staff analysis on number ten, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose?
Number eleven, that the establishment of a conditional use will not impede the normal loading and development uses of the area. Staff analysis, the site have been illegal, non-formal dwelling since nineteen sixty-seven, and bringing it up to current standard should not adversely affect surrounding vacant property.
All those that agree with that analysis, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose?
Number thirteen, that the density of any proposed residential dwellings is not greater than the density of the surrounding neighborhood or not greater than the density indicated by the applicable zoning district. Staff analysis, this proposal is consistent with the neighboring residential properties and proposed in an open-quarter quarter of the agricultural protection district.
All those that agree with the staff analysis on number thirteen, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose?
Number fifteen, that the site-specific conditions and such other conditions are established as required for the protection of public's health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Staff analysis, this proposal will not negatively affect the public's health, safety, morals, and general.
All those that agree with the staff analysis on number fifteen, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose?
I'll make a motion to accept the fire meetings.
Second to that one?
I'll second it.
How we do a roll call and then back?
Greg Myrie.
Yes.
Cindy Wright.
Yes.
And you Bellman.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Jim Weiser.
Yes.
Jerry Hopper.
Yes.
Josh Grant.
Someone care to make a motion to recommend moving this to one of the conditions?
Recommendations. Planning Commission must consider the criteria above. Should the permit be granted, staff recommend requiring following conditions. One, the permit shall comply with all federal, state, local laws and regulations. Number two, the county may enter onto the premises for reasonable time and in a reasonable manner to ensure that the permit holder is compliant with the conditions and all other applicable statute rules and ordinances.
Now, would anyone care to make a motion with the conditions involved here?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Do a roll call?
Greg Myrie.
Yes.
Cindy Wright.
Yes.
And you Bellman.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Jim Weiser.
Yes.
Jerry Hopper.
Yes.
Thank you, Joe.
That's it?
All done. Thank you. Good work.
Good improvement.
It's gonna be a lot nicer when it's done. Gotta get, I got a question, maybe you guys don't know, but for the, since the well was never certified, so the septic, the new septic has to be X amount of feet from the well, since it's not certified well. But it is a cased well.
Good question. I mean, I guess we can, we can.
You check the water.
We can, we can look at what constitutes. You're right, there is, the issue with the casing is one of the definitions that applies on the various septic exits along. That's absolutely right.
So, in terms of. When he's there and he cuts the top of the well off, and we measure that casing, and you know how deep that casing needs to be?
How, you know how old it is? And is there a well law? There might be a well law.
But nothing was, nothing was registered. Like the septic, they look back and everything's registered.
Yeah.
Anybody ever pulled that well in the past?
The guy from.
Lawson? I wouldn't assume that well appeared to be.
I don't know, the guy from Brownsville was supposed to show up here this week and the week before.
It appears, it appears?
Yeah.
Could be a little bit longer, yeah.
So, he hasn't been answering all my calls this week, so.
Sometimes we're out of service.
Yeah.
Well.
So, we'll get your names. Or you'll be just in the driveway or you're just in the driveway.
Yeah, well, I don't bet. Chad Myrie. And he said, can't get, well, he can't get anything, so all this was done.
Right.
But this well setback, first they thought fifty, then they thought seventy-five, now they're thinking hundreds.
Well, we'll get you started. Okay. We'll look into that issue of what constitutes properly constructed well. Many people have said that, that's not even appropriate. I mean, we'll have to talk with the department of Minnesota.
Okay.
So, they're gonna, they're gonna look at the well. And they're gonna say, it's been this way as the seal, certain configuration, and they'll have a standard, and they're gonna say, for you, this is for them. We can't allow them to evaluate the well plan. And we can provide you with that standard.
Okay. Okay.
Well, we're in between things here, somehow we make a motion for the last meeting's minutes.
Thanks, guys.
What else to part hearing for that, for the commissioners meeting?
It'll be October.
Yeah, October tenth.
We have a motion made in the second of the last meeting's minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody who wishes to.
Well, the meeting's scheduled for six fifty, so we got five minutes. Yeah.
You know, it wouldn't be a bad idea, put in the newspaper that if you're gonna build a shout, that you have to get a permit, just like a holt's.
Fairly, right?
Yeah. You did.
Yeah.
I know two people that are building these shouts and they don't think they need permits. You know. Well, what's, what's gonna happen to them when they come in front of us? You know?
Starts looking after the bads.
Yeah.
That could exceed an year.
Yeah.
County website or something too, that's probably on there too.
Yeah, it's probably in there, but most of these people work someplace else. They just live down here.
Hard time.
Yeah.
What's the legal limit from the septic? For the well?
For, there's two sets. For the egg, it's thirteen-twenty, it's a quarter mile. For a subdeveloped, it's a half mile.
Quarter mile is a half.
The, yep. The half mile would be for the subdevelopment, if that were to be given down the road, that would be a different set of value.
This is all in the document.
So, on the Crescent.
Yeah, Eugene Bowers, B Black, there's some right here.
Oh, Amelia, when she put this together, that's identifying what type of activity they're doing at their septic. And then the dark green is actually the whole house.
Maybe it was here, part of it.
The proposed development spot. It's, we believe that, you know, I mean, has it, do they, do they know what the assets mean? Has it been actively killed in the last ten years? There is a section that it looks like they, to get into this a little bit, but there is a section that, it looks like they reseeded it in twenty-fourteen. That was the only location you conceived of an area that was reworked. That area is actually too close to the road to be built on.
Well, I guess it just hit six fifty, so we'll call this hearing order. You wanna read the meeting notice or make any supplementary remarks or anything?
Sure, what I can, what I can say is, what we are going to discuss tonight is exclusively for the conditional use permit. On one side of the road, nothing that we're gonna talk about tonight has to deal with the subdevelopment. In terms of that part, it's exclusively for a conditional use permit for a single-family, non-farm dwelling on, uh, basically the other side of the road. This is what's listed. And, I mean, you didn't have them, but you could certainly do the map too, that will identify the distances. With a few lot concerns with it, I'd certainly, heard if people have those. So, but that's basically one of the things that came up, and like Greg had just referenced earlier was, there's two sets of standards. Realize that it's the subdevelopment that we're talking, that we're, we're talking about that. That has the standard of half a mile. Whereas the standard for dwelling is a quarter mile. And so, when we measured it out, you'll also see in there that the one is, it's a quarter mile thirteen-twenty. Came up to be a little over fourteen hundred was sort of the worst-case location where we can estimate in terms of the separation distance. And then, another consideration that we were certainly looking at was the prime egg soil definition, you know, in terms of that. But what, what I was just telling them about was, is we, we look back, actually Amy did, some of it, that it looked back on what, what's occurred in the last ten years.
Oh, sure.
And what we only saw was one instance where part of it was reworked. It looks like it was reseeded, at least that's what it appears to be for us. But that area was actually so close to the, to the existing road, that wouldn't be considered a buildable area where that could be done anyway, as far as that goes. So, those are just some, some highlights and stuff. Set the basis, we're, we're talking exclusively about a conditional use permit for the.
I bring this stuff home, my wife, she wants to read all of it.
Want to read the meeting notice?
She leans on one, says, you know, what you're talking about. It's just terrible. I think she'd be better than this board than I am.
I can't quite follow your reference. I mean, I'll, I'll let her get into it once we get going down. Is that okay? All right, yeah, so. Notice of public hearing. Please take notice that an application has been made by Block Country LLC, sixty-nine, sixty-two, State Twenty-Sixth, the Crescent, Minnesota, five-five-nine-two-one, for a conditional use permit to have a dwelling in an agricultural district, section fourteen through fourteen point three, conditional uses subdivision one, subsection ten, in the Crescent Township on the following premises to wit, fraction of northeast quarter, section one, township number four, range by Houston County, Minnesota, parcel zero-eight, zero-two-seven-six, zero-zero-zero. Said applicant standing and making application is as the owner of said described lands. Hearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Commissioners' Room, City of Caledonia, Minnesota, at six-fifty P M on Thursday, September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three. All persons having an interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to submit comments relative to the granting or denying of said application. Comments should be mailed to the Environmental Services Department, zero-four South Marshall Street, Caledonia, Minnesota, five-five-nine-two-one, or emailed to martin dot Eric at C O dot Houston dot M N dot U S. Must be received by Wednesday, September twentieth, twenty-twenty-three. Comments in regards to petition received by the state will be part of the public record and will be made available for review by the Planning Commission prior to the meeting. Houston County Planning Commission by Martin Eric Salving.
Okay. Would the applicant care to come forward and describe the project?
Well, I'm sure everyone knows that I purchased a farm over in North Pine Creek and.
Excuse me, Mike, can you sign in? And if people wanna comment, we'll give you the opportunity. There will be a sign-in chief as well. And Michael, we can save your name.
Uh, Michael Suckauer. Owner of Block Country. Uh, we purchased this farm, um, early spring this year. And to this point, we've sold off some parcels, uh, some of the egg parcels. Um, I see they're here tonight, uh, bought a piece of it and, uh, thank you, got a piece of it that's, I'll, I'll call that prime egg because it's adjacent to their properties. So, that basically had peeled off. And what I'm trying to do here is, um, is subdivide this so I can put up a residential structure in this parcel E, and you've got this, um, figure two, what I'm looking at. And, um, parcel E is the, the parcel, or roughly, uh, I believe eight acres and that, that parcel and this fifty-three thousand square feet that's stated here. That would be the area where the house would, would get set. Um, so I'm requesting a conditional use permit to build on that. It's a clear, uh, quarter-quarter section. And I guess I'm open to questions.
Northerly House is built on that forty?
I don't know.
Can you address in the questions that you had filled out, um, you say, of one house on eight acres and one house on thirty acres? Is that?
But this, tonight is part of I know.
Right.
Because.
So, that's future.
Right.
Right.
Correct.
So, is that a different quarter, quarter than?
It is.
The other one. So, this, uh, you're looking at this figure two, the, the north whatever here, that's, that's where you're gonna put the house, and then this other section, that's in a different quarter, quarter of the world?
Yes.
Correct.
You own parcel E and the fifty-three thousand, you own all that?
All, all of that, yeah.
And that's a road that divides the two?
Pardon me?
That's a road that divides the two, it looks like, uh, the road goes.
Yeah.
This here, this, what's that, the quarter-quarter section?
The blue lines are what, what is.
The road.
Yes. This. This is huge right here. So, this'll be a house you'll build and then somebody else will buy it, is kind of what?
Right.
Any other questions?
That's correct. There seems to be a, a real need for, uh, I don't know if you're familiar with what I've been working, but uh, we did a development in, uh, the Crescent, which we're just basically closing out now with sixty-three lots on it, and there's really nothing available. Um, in a way, lots right now in the Lycrescent area. It's gotten pretty slim. And even with the higher interest rates, I expected the market to fall off, but, um, I think that there's still a lot of housing that needs to go in there. There's actually a shortage of housing when a house, existing house comes on the market right now, it's normally a matter of days and a lot of the times above asking price. So, things haven't changed a whole lot. Even with the higher interest rates.
Crescent's kind of a place where people live and work in the cross and.
Right.
Yeah.
Let's look at the township city of office.
Um, I took it to them, the only real concern that I heard was, um, the, the road. They're concerned about the road with future development. But it's Township Road and it's what it is.
So, so how many property, like, in the north part here, is that kind of, what is that?
That's a bluff.
So, that drops off pretty quick.
Yeah, when you get across the road, it heads uphill to the north.
Yeah, if you look back on figure one, that will show you the bigger diagram. And what it was pointing to in figure one. That inside the zero eight zero two seven six, there is. There's a section in the north and it would be it's on the. Northwest. Section of where the part of it is, you'd see that. That smoother. That's where they're they're talking about the. The location of the well. Otherwise, the rest of it's. Pretty uh. It's.
Okay, approach the bench just so I'm exactly what we're talking about.
Yep, I'd be great.
I could see everybody looking at. I looked at tabs too.
These don't seem to be the same. Though.
Um I got a look at it. So this is the parcel we're talking about right over in here. I believe the line is going pretty much. Altitude in here. And then the quarter section line. That's over in this. This. Area right here would be the building site. And that's what's coming here. Corresponding to.
This one here.
So this. This field that you're seeing here is right here.
And this woods is that.
That was about here.
Are you planning on later on building down here in that field?
Yep. I figured it.
So.
I was trying to do it all the way.
I know.
Didn't happen.
Yeah.
Clerical issues.
But he's planning on building in the field.
But this hasn't really been farmed for. Is it comparable? Need this stuff here? That's this. This is the only this is what.
That's what he's talking about. You're only you're talking about, I think. Seven acres in here, something like that. And the parcel is going to go to the three acres.
Is it north of Pine Creek?
Good. North of Pine Creek.
No, the creek itself.
We're not hearing this. I'm sorry. We're not hearing this. Is that appropriate?
Um no, we're not trying to be. He's just describing the.
Okay.
He's just finding chili. Yes. What is the road? You certainly.
Could I see that?
Get your chance to comment.
Could I see that?
So here's North Pine Creek Road.
Are there actually these copies? Would you would you make it?
It's a good one.
Yeah, please do. You're gonna have mine.
This is this line? All of it would be give people the knowledge of what you're trying to do. You eliminate all the headings.
Any other questions? He's tall.
Um I asked if this was north of Pine Creek, the actual creek itself, not the golf course. How far away is it from that creek? Where you would intend to build?
It's if if you think in shoreline, is that what you think?
Yes.
It's right on the edge.
If Houston is seven hundred fifty. It's within shore.
Beacon showed it right on the edge of. The distinction.
Shoreland District. Inflates conflicts with the.
They got Indian mounds there. Their Indian mounds there.
City out of D C has been contacted. And Jean told me it would be altered.
There's a there is an Indian mound that's on the other side of the. Pine Creek. Down in the valley.
South of the creek.
It would be south of the creek, correct? But uh it's a long way from where we're talking about.
Well, I think we have a fair amount of people who want to kind of.
Yep.
Have some conversation here. So if you'd care to um go back and.
Sure.
Back and then. Um whoever wants to sign in and kind of speak uh to the matter.
Where's the sign in sheet?
Right up here.
Right up here. Come on up and come on up and talk. I just know what your feelings are.
Are you ready for?
Sure, you want to sit down and just identify yourself and kind of.
Yes.
We're free to talk.
Yep, thank you. My name is Ed Walsh. And I live just. North of the development in rural Crescent. And it was a little difficult for me to understand fully. What the proposed development is going to be. And I went on the county's website and. It may be there, but I was unable to locate the. The applicant's. Zoning package. The are they on the website? They would have been sent to the ten most closest. So that the package from the applicant then is not on the county's website.
On the county's website.
Okay, so essentially. I knew nothing about about it until one of my neighbors who lives adjacent to the proposed development. Came by and suggested. That I come and get enlightened as to what's going to happen. So I did some. Rough, tough, quick investigation. And looked at the county's comprehensive. Land use plan and looked at the zoning ordinance. And what I learned. Um sort of confirmed. My anecdotal understanding. Is that Houston County puts a premium. And a high value. On agricultural land.
We do.
And. I don't know because I. Didn't see the zoning package. What this land's existing or prior use. Has been. Other than I know it's zoned agricultural protection district. And if the words in the. Comprehensive land use plan. And if the words in your zoning ordinance are taken at face value. The preservation. Of agricultural land. Is a key and a high value. To have what I would call. Piecemeal intrusion. And piecemeal decimation. Of your agricultural land and your agricultural uses. Little by little by little. Um I think it's going to run contrary. To what you as. Uh planning and zoning commissioners have expressed in the zoning ordinance. And the comprehensive plan. And I know the comprehensive plan. Appears to be in the process of being revised and reevaluated. But the even the proposed revised plan recites. A key premium and a high value placed. On agricultural land in the county. Um so therefore. I would encourage you to abide by. What you've recited in your comprehensive land use plan. And abide by what you have in your zoning ordinance. And take a very, very strict. View. Of letting anything happen. On this agriculturally used land. Um knowing that. The developer has. Uh many other acres in the area. And to grant this use. And then six months or a year from now or less. You know, the developer comes in and wants to build another. Home on another forty acres and another home on another forty. Or five or ten and on another forty. And further decimate. Your agricultural land, I think, would be contrary to what what you've expressed. In both your plan and your zoning ordinance. Um and I wish I had a better grasp on the actual development. And I apologize for speaking in generalities. But I focused on what I've read in both your plan, your comprehensive land use plan. And your zoning ordinance. And to me. As a casual observer, it looks like this county. Our county has put a high premium. On preserving agricultural land. And by granting this conditional use. That preservation will not happen. And it will be totally contrary to what you have in both of those written documents. So thank you very, very much for the opportunity to address.
Did you ever talk like to the township officers about this?
Um I didn't even know about it. So I would have had I known about it. I found out about it a week ago. When Mr. Zenke, um Mr. Baumgartner, uh you know. Happened to see me on the road. And told me that the hearing was going to be tonight. I scrambled um. To get what I could and unfortunately. I failed because I know there's a lot of paperwork that I have not seen and. Again, I apologize for.
We are the committee would. Would like to hear what the township officers have to say about this.
I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Oh, I also.
You can you can come over here. Yeah, monthly state your name.
Give us your name.
Tim Payne.
You're a township supervisor?
Yes. Well, I was.
Or he is.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I know. I look young. I get that all the time. Yeah. So this whole thing is kind of getting. Getting kind of crazy because everyone thinks everything's about this development now. So this little, you know, section that he wants to build on. I had to call my myself. When it said he contacted the township officers. I didn't. We even President Roy, Jason Weiser, we knew nothing about it except for the permit. And it said he contacted Bob Scholl. Is that what it said?
Roy got a letter.
Yeah. Roy got a letter. Yeah. Yep, through the email. So. Well, and that's what we thought and I'm new to it. I've only been a couple of years or a year and a half, but. I just want to know if that's how the rabbit goes. Cause when this came, my phones ring in. Everyone's wondering what's going on. And I myself have no idea. So I tried to look it up on Beacon, try to figure out what it meant. Um I mean, if everything checks out, so be it. But. I we kind of would like to know, I guess, ahead of time. To have some sort of.
The way it works, I'm a township supervisor too and our clerk gets it and then she just forwards it to all of us.
Yeah.
If somebody applies.
Yeah, so we got that.
Yeah, that that's what we get.
That's all you get?
I think so. Okay, there's any further questions you like what you did.
Okay. So you don't actually have to contact the township officers or at least?
Always contact the township.
They do, but that's that's the method is it goes to the clerk and then the clerk uses his forward's email to all of us.
See, to be honest with you, I used to be on township board too.
Okay.
And we used to go to every location. Whether we're going to site a house or anything.
Yep.
And we went there because we would spec culverts for getting in and out of the driveway. And we ran into a lot of locations where we ran into locations where they were building on the township road. You know, so that's why I I told this committee here before. We've got to change how we do this stuff. So the township should be involved in this, just like everybody else.
Yeah, because we get all the questions right away and it's like.
If the township gone through this and at a meeting, have they had a chance to?
Not about this.
Okay, so you. You got it coming up. But do you have an as a as an issue in a meeting and come to a.
Yeah.
So your township has not discussed this yet.
Mine, no. No, I mean, we had three text messages. But uh. Yeah, I just wanted to come up here honestly and get information so that we I can relay it back to figure out what's, you know, what was the plan because. Everything gets right back to the development. Anytime now, anything happens now, it's development and everyone's like, what's going on?
I think we should table this down with township against this guy. Yep, I think you got to hear from the township first.
Okay.
But I think I think we're here tonight. We should get get everybody who wants.
Now, we want people to speak.
Uh yeah, we have a chance to do so.
You didn't come here to sit and listen to us.
Yeah, so thanks. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Christopher Beckner. I live at four five four eight six. Lost Valley Drive. Crescent, Minnesota.
Can you spell your last name?
F like in Frank, N C H N E R. By trade. I'm a professional answerer. This is the stuff I do. I wouldn't take this job in a million years. Because I'll tell you what. I found Theo Eden. Laying in the snow, dead. My wife and I. Took Bernie meals. For four years. He was the most enjoyable. Old time farmer. And how many of you have shook his hand? Bernie Eden. That's what we're talking about. The Eden Farm.
I've dealt with him.
Yeah.
You have. You delivered fuel oil. Mr. Saxhauer, do you ever meet Bernie Eden? Do you ever meet Theo Eden? So you don't know what. It is to be. A farmer. On a century farm, a century farm. Okay? They did not get that acclamation. Until after Theo died. I reiterate what Mr. Walsh said about the zoning. I have read the ordinance and I've talked to Mr. Herrick. Regarding this situation. If you want to develop property. Go develop property in town or next to town. Don't run out in the middle of. The country. And. Try to put a bunch of septic septic systems in on clay. Or there where there may be archaeological findings. I spoke with the DOT today. Bill Rock. Um they would have a concern with the A D T. Are we good on the A D T? Yeah, no, yay.
That's not new.
Average daily traffic. Average daily traffic is ten. Units per day, per hustle. So the plan I saw. Let alone what he wants to do now and what else is twenty one lots. Two hundred and ten cars. How many of you play golf at Pine Creek? How many of you have been down on that road? That can't get. Um my my other question or my other inference is the fact that. How does this is this property? Orders Winona County. And I can't tell you how many people drive from. Houston County to Winona County. But how does it affect the Winona County roads and New Hartford Township? We're traveled. I'm, I'm sorry, they, they blacktopped of, or seal quoted a hun, of what, mile of it in, a mile, a mile. The rest of it is not good. You can attest to that. You gotta drive the oil truck out. The moral of the story is, how does it impact? The entire community? Bernie Eden told me. Got it right here. When he got out of the nursing home. Wendy and I brought him some meatloaf, mashed potatoes, gravy and some green beans. And I went and sat with Bernie. And his personal representative was there. He told me. I wish I could give this farm to your son. I just want this to stay farm. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Other audience members would like to speak? Short or long, if you had anything to say, this, this would be a good time. You know, I don't, you just come forward and sign into.
John Bauer. Just as far as the Indian burial mound goes and, uh. Distance from the creek. Um, I guess. On the GPS, I'm a neighbor. So on, uh, GPS, I'm showing that we're only. Hundred and fifty yards to approximate. Burial ground to where he wants to build and a hundred and sixty yards. To, when assuming where the driveway would come.
Has this Indian site been studied as far as, you know, actually being one there?
I've, I've been told that it is on record. Myself, I haven't s- seen the record. I know where it's at.
Is that up on, on the hill, close to it or?
I can show you here on my phone if. I can come up there.
Even on this map that we have, that would be helpful. We know where the property is coming.
Yeah. I can try to show you. Point around here. This will be the. Here's the area where we're at. There's one cedar tree that comes out of it. Yeah. This is actually Pine Creek.
So, yes, yeah. That's, that's the creek down here, isn't it?
Right.
Yeah.
All the way up there.
Yes.
And here's the road.
So it's right down by the creek.
Yeah. There's actually the small. Creek that comes out of, um, Plains Valley itself. That meets, I mean, Creek right here.
Is that this bend here, I suspect, or is it?
Yeah, very well. Pretty much that bush, there's one cedar tree that grows out of it.
And somebody was gonna come and look at that the way it sounds. Thank you.
All right. What were you looking at?
So how many, how many people did you say that, you kind of had it on Beacon? Everybody can throw that, I guess.
Do your name please, sir.
My name is George Johnston. And I live right next, down the next door neighbor to the Eden Park. And, um. Does, uh, do feet lots have any bearing on building?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, there's about. Two feet lots that are probably within the vicinity of that.
They have to be a quarter mile from a residential.
There would be one. Pretty much. Right there.
They actually.
We added it for about fourteen twenty. Or we added about one thousand four hundred and twenty feet as opposed to thirteen twenty. We had about eighty feet farther than the quarter mile set back.
Are you talking about the Eden Farm itself? That, um. Travis Baumgartner bought?
Right.
Okay, is that a certified feet lot?
Yes.
That's what you have on here, right?
So, I just thought that it ought to be brought up.
Yeah.
Yep.
There. And. You said something about you send out ten copies to the media people surrounding this thing.
Yeah.
I never got one.
Really?
And I'm the closest thing you can get.
So this. Yeah, no, um, so you are right there in that corner, right? I had a question from a commissioner today. And he stated that you didn't get one of these and I looked at my list and there were ten people on there, but you weren't on this list. If you had been, if he had been applying for this property, you would have been the closest one. But. Since it's this property, there's properties up in Winona County that are closer to this. And his, he's a landowner too, so. It wasn't, we weren't looking at this whole piece, we're just looking at this part that he's planning for the CUP. So that is all, so. By the time you counted the landowners around and the closest property owners, you weren't in that pile. There's only ten people who get it. Does that make sense?
It does, it does.
You know, then I have a standing exception that if somebody looks like they're closing something extra.
But that's not in our order, our order state.
I'm all for giving you any information we got.
Yeah. The newspaper, so it didn't.
Which paper does it come in? Well, that's kind of. Kind of funny when hardly anybody gets to film a county paper.
Attempted that, but they said they weren't publishing that. That is the reason why I didn't get in there. We knew this was gonna be as far as the one, but. That didn't happen.
It just seems like it's, it's a short notice for them to come out and, and then. And the other thing is, is. Like Travis, he got his. But the deadline for any paperwork to be sent here to be. To be put in. Is, well, I think it was said to the twentieth. And when you don't get the, when you don't get this notice in the mail, like he didn't, it's already the twenty third.
Yeah.
So in order to tell anybody if they got anything they want to put in there. You're way past the deadline. It seems.
I will try to do a better job.
Yeah.
I would appreciate it. I really would. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else care to speak to the subject?
Ed Moldenour, I live. West of where this is, a big farm there. You referenced this field that hasn't been. Worked for ten years. That's a operator. I've lived, I'm sixty five years old, I lived here, there my whole life. On Eden's farm, it. They had corn down there. They grew. Great crops. And one thing about that farm, it's southern exposure. They get the. Crops in early. They had super crops. And you let somebody build a house there. I mean, we're only, what, eighty feet? Past the limit on the quarter mile for the feet lot. You'll get somebody in there. Johnny's calls will be belling, weans his calves. People all like that, will be dust blowing. His corn dryer will be running. Got to think about all these things, people from town moving out in the country that don't think about that stuff. I, I just think it. It, it's a shame that. This ag land is. Building houses on it. God's not making any more farmland. So once it's gone, it's gone. Well. Wind comes out of the west most of the time. They're gonna smell Johnny's pigs and it's scalding. I mean, that's how it is in the country. If you get the frog curse in there, it can make things bad. It's just, that's why we got. Ornets and protected farmland in the county. He should have thought about that more before he. Bought that piece of property. I don't think he did his homework.
They had, um, Johnson's worked that farm?
Yeah.
Did they work that field?
Well, I made jail off of it.
Well, what'd you call it? Crop?
Yeah.
I would call it a name drop, wouldn't you? Okay. Recently?
Well, it made every year. Yeah.
And they're cropping it just so, hey, it's that farm.
That's what I was asking. I was. Be in terms of, of the definition. I followed up, I asked him very, you know, how I would interpret that rule. That, that's where I was basing that definition. That doesn't mean it's rent, that's just, that, that was their past practice, the gate was.
Was it rented or?
They rent. They've been rented.
Fourteen years.
Fourteen years.
Yeah, it's good ag land.
Yeah.
Ordered its farm. Now, he loses that piece of ground, if somebody wants to build another one. His farm suffers.
And Eden's used to have pasture below there. Crickets, or a field, I don't know how many acres it is, I'll guess. For three or four babes.
Our, what we're talking about right here is about two to three acres.
I'll guess what, it's an inch.
Let's, 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 let's just keep the conversation up here. So.
I think I'm done, thanks.
Are there any other comments that people would like to make tonight?
How do you do? Glorybauer. On the adjoining farm with my son. And I would really hate to see. My farm be destroyed by people moving. What they don't like to smell. They don't like our combines running, they don't like our dryers running. But sometimes we work at ten, eleven, twelve o'clock at night. And I don't think it's correct. And I know Bernie Eden would not like it at all. And I couldn't see that happening. And I just really don't want to see our future farmers be taken down by people who want to develop property for greed.
If your farm was right towards their farm. If you couldn't build those houses, would you rent that land?
Pardon?
If you couldn't build the houses on that bigger?
Yeah.
He would. Yeah. So he, he would get, get in, income off of it anyway. You know?
We, we get an income off of our farm.
Yeah.
We, we prep farm, we beef farm, and we have hogs and chickens. I don't know what people do when they move out from the city. They think that they. Can rule. And pretty soon we have people, Houston County coming out, we have cops coming out. I can tell you that I have a greenhouse. And I have a good business. And ten years ago, my son had to put down his donkey. Which is irrelevant. Because some people came out and said she was being mistreated. And she wasn't. She hadn't been foundered when she was young. That's a true story and someone turned us in. And the police department that came to our house and told us. Saw our name on the list and shook their head and said. Not Bowers, their animals are well taken care of, they're fed as pigs every time we go by. I don't need to have somebody who's gonna move in and tell us what we can and cannot do. I just really oppose this whole thing, I think it's wrong.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Then there was a comment in the, um, written comments too that you probably should read too. Well, let's, let's just get this thing kind of over with here, um, but, uh, wasn't there a submitted comment too?
Yeah, sure.
Somebody, someone else.
Oh, that, that wasn't for this.
Well, it was.
Yeah.
Or the, the Patty Mar.
Yeah.
Yeah, for this one.
Yeah.
And that's, that's right, we can read it.
You should read it, yeah. It's right here.
Comment from. Says Patty Mar, but.
Um, the names are at the bottom, very bottom.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Marvin Lightstein. Patricia Booger. And the comment is to Martin Herrick, we are opposed to this permit, taking away agricultural land for. For homes, if I did, it's not good for our society, we must maintain our farmland as much as possible. Please, this is to go forward, sincerely Marvin Lightstein, Patricia Booger.
You also said there was a couple of other oral comments or calls?
Yeah, and they would, they would basically just oppose.
So at this point, I think, uh, we want to entertain a motion to maybe table this until the township gets to have more chances of looking at it.
Yeah.
In, uh, in this kind of.
I would like to hear the township's opinion. I think, right, I'll make a motion to table it, though, township has had fans to remove all this stuff from the side and. They were never notified, so I would rather the township make this decision, that's it. Here of all the complaints, somebody bitched about it, now. They're the ones that's gonna take the heat, so I think we should move it into their hands.
And when people can go to that meeting also and express their opinion too, um, yes, sir?
Chris Becker.
Yeah.
How did this get passed the township? To the county level? So the proper channels had not been followed to begin with.
The, the protocol was followed, it just said it probably didn't give them enough time to really have a meeting in between them.
Yeah.
Because we, township meet once a month, that's kind of the standard deal, and if you get things at the tail end or something, it might, might be well before you meet. And that's exactly what happened.
You meet the third week and you get that notice in the fourth week, then you got a whole month before they even see it.
Understood, thank you for your time.
Is it possible you can get more information as far as this Indian burial ma- Indian? Indian place. As far as setbacks and what, what's involved with that? As far as setbacks and what, what's involved with that?
They will decide what's their. Our. Request is now.
Okay.
They know where it is.
Sure.
Is there a marker there that indicates that and, and you know, if you go out there, can you see it?
They have the ability.
They probably just have moments.
But it's, it's not.
I was just gonna say, it's the only one.
It could very well be.
I'm gonna second the motion that has on the table, but I'd also like to ask that further information, I'd also like to know more about the water runoff and. There were some details that I didn't really see on here, it said we have plenty of area for runoff and soil conditions are adequate. I'd like to know a little bit further about the study. Um, I know in the notes before we talk about this again, um, because in the notes it did say that um. There would be um discussion of adequate needs, I'm concerned about pinecrete area there and any waterway. So I'd just like more.
Okay.
Insidious.
They already did some soil samples in the middle of the big field there, and across there. That ground, that's the reason why it's such a beautiful farm ground, because. It maintains moisture, my yard is right next door, and I've never watered it fifty-eight years. There are.
Not this year?
This may not, this may not be what you. They were, they, they did take soil samples for the septic.
Wait, number one, two, three?
Oh, the egg class, yes, they're.
Classified number one, I agree, or number two?
There's um, there's some of it in. Various classifications.
How, how many shows are there? Go ahead, step up.
Yeah, well, uh for the septic, it was probably.
They should have one for every other lot, but doesn't matter. Um, how they come up?
It's that's the thing.
Gotcha.
I mean, in terms of.
Gotcha.
Across the road.
So I'm, I'm just, I'm getting anxious about what is gonna happen here. Once this, this ball starts rolling. So I'm sorry, I apologize. How did that sample come up on that person?
For the septic?
What he's applying for?
The, the septic was a B amoxis.
Mm-hmm, and everything will be. At best. Never mind.
So at this point, thank you very much. I think we have a motion, I mean, second.
Okay. Great, Larry?
Yes.
Cindy Gray?
Yes.
Wayne Feldmayer?
Yep. Yes.
Jim Weeser?
Yes.
Gary Hatton?
Yes.
So we have thirty days or sixteen for them to, for the township to decide.
We can table it. We can request an extension. And that extension can be for an extra six.
Okay.
So we, we can, we can go to that.
Well, just so the township can get to meet and do anything on it.
Yeah, we, we, we.
Could you go to the township and have the township, the three guys come to the meeting?
Yeah.
I think that would be the, the best thing you could do.
You guys get together ahead of time and make your decisions on what you want, and we can sit down and talk it over.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Any recommendations you need, you just talk to Martin.
Yeah, and I'm willing to go be a meeting. And I'm ready.
Cause whatever you guys come up with would be the plan that we're gonna use more likely, because.
So what was that conversation, you're gonna go to their meeting, Larry? Good, thanks.
And then it's current date is, so hopefully I'll have more.
Many care about the computing.
Good way to get it all with going.
Invite the public and they can speak.
Um, I, I'd like to. Make sure we're on the right page. This is for one health.
Correct.
But it's, it's opening the door that everybody's concerned about, that this will be carried on.
Okay. Let's see if the township comes forward. And says that, you know, they don't want that terrible land built on. That can be the township's authority there.
Not sure, yeah, not saying no, I'm just not sure.
Well, yeah, we go to the state, that's, uh, called it.
Either county has already voted protect ag land.
Oh, yeah, well, the complaint, absolutely, yeah, no, what was brought up was right, right there, I mean, and the complaint has been, it's finished. And it, it's exactly what you said. That's right. I'm under the impression that we come forward with like, well, we, we come and be like, hey, absolutely, they're like, you know. The policy, your guys' decision.
I think it's really hard. We can't override the town.
County board.
Town board, the county.
The county board.
Okay. Right, and that goes to the county board.
Well, with the township coming to our next meeting and says they want nothing done with this, they don't want no house built or nothing. That'd be the recommendation that we would make to the county board.
Yeah, that's right.
Right?
Yeah.
Well, I think we'll look at it at that time. Next meeting.
We can, we can come out here and.
Back to the proposal again, um, just a clarification, I read that this is a one. Uh, request for a parcel of home or a building on eight acres and then another one on thirty acres. So I think we need to get that.
Yeah, okay, what, how, how that transpired was. The, the application. My, I was under the understanding that he could get two for the seven hundred dollars and, and the situation is. You, one permit for one, one conditional use permit for one twelve, because the other side of it is. How you can even split that out, you know, in terms of doing. Two dwellings under one permit, and then the, and then the other thing would be is, if you sold it to two different parties, which would be. Very likely, how would you even be able to track them? You know, I mean, you, your, your legal description, it wouldn't match up with what the permit is. And so it's one permit for one conditional use for one twelve. If that were to be granted. The initial plan. Was, was, like, so I guess I thought this was like, you could go here or go here. The, the initial plan is with two houses, right? Well, the, the thing of it is, it, you know, it's, they're in different quarters.
So actually, we're just dealing with one.
This one gets passed, there might be another one.
Yes.
If they do find that, you'll bury it wrong. I came out of Yucatan and Yucatan put, uh, I think thirteen in over there. And they found, uh. I think it was an Indian boy buried upright with an hatchet in his head. They took it down to the decor museum for about twenty years. The Indians, when they came and did that study through Yucatan to find out more, more stuff about it. They, they were pretty strict, they took that Indian boy out of decor and everything. So you might be meeting with a different bunch of people on that. Well, that's another night's problem. So if everybody's comfortable with this, I think we should adjourn the meeting.
You didn't do your roll call?
Yeah, no, we, in between the meetings, we, we talked about, we did a voice vote on all that.
They're talking about the meeting.
Yeah. I think our word here is done.
We all voted on the motion.
So, yeah, we voted, we did a voice vote on the mess, you know, that's we vow.
Yeah.
So I think we can entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Wait, 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 do we have to re. Uh, post this?
We will.
Yeah. I'll have to repost it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably try to get it in the Crescent Book Paper.
Yep, I think that. Okay, yeah, you have a question?
Would you re? Why would you repost this? Before the Crescent Township talks about it?
We can't repost it until they have.
Okay, we can, we can, we can extend it out, we can, we can post it. What we'll do is we'll save it six weeks from now.
Clarification. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for letting me speak.
These guys are pretty cooperative, just don't talk to them.
Yeah, yeah.
Right over there on the.
Two minutes.
We have an extra.
You know, you, you think about it.
So let's see, you made a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion to adjourn.
Made the second to adjourn the meeting, all favors a guy. Any opposed? We're good.